Recording in progress.
All right, the meeting is regular council of city of Albert for Monday, May the twenty second. Well, Ryan, we've already done that. Let's leave this, please. Let's leave to the United States of America. In secret, for which they has one day under the individual with liberty expressed. Okay, first item on our agenda will be the consent agenda that includes three items. On the water sewer termination request. The approval of the main city council meeting minutes. And then approval of the airport advisory minutes. Second. Yes, I think that Mick had made motion to approve the consent agenda, include the water sewer termination request, the approval of the city council meeting minutes. And the airport advisory minutes, council or not, we're not going to second that motion, any discussion, debate. Concerns, all right, do you now, if they say aye aye, aye. Opposed, our motion carries. Now, next on the agenda, petitions and allegations. For most of the comments, please state your full name and whether you are an elder city resident. All citizens comments are limited to five minutes per subject unless city council has further questions. Would anybody like to head to the podium?
I wonder what I heard during this new voice, I mean, I don't know. But I'm here on behalf of the elders, got my connections. And one of the hotels that's up there by the, that takes care of people that are visiting, some family have friends that they're personally settling. And we had a grant for the sidewalk, we put it around, maybe last April. And we just tried to see if I could get a refund of the building credits if we are not properly. We got the grant for the money, so that's.
It's my understanding, I have to do the check, it's still. Was it not? I wouldn't say it's wrong, but. It's in motion.
Just remember, we need to refund the eighty dollars. Do we need to connect? I'm sorry. Council first bill has made a motion to refund the eighty dollars to ten actions, council or not, second that motion made, the debate, the discussion. You know, whatever, say aye aye. My motion carries, we want to refund the eighty dollars.
I did have one more, I just think comment is not anything. Um, I just wanted to say, I was really disappointed to see. That it's not happening, well, I didn't yell, but my understanding was it was supposed to be. You talk about water and it only comes on when somebody pushes the button to go in. It's only on for three to five minutes at a time, but when people are actually there. And I have a wondering, it's probably like, there are. And I would be doing that, it's very tough. And it's like, it's cool, and it's, it's so much easier for me as a grandparent to watch three little ones there for that in the pool. So, that's just my.
Is there anyone else out there? No one? Okay, let's finish this, start at library board for points, real quick, before we get started. Um, we got the Kansas statute right here. So, we were hoping to have a right path last, um, last meeting, we're going to finish that, um, this time around. And so, my three appointments are, um, underrated. Senator Richard, and I would like to reappoint, uh, Daniel Fisher. That's, that's it.
I'll second that.
You know, so Chris Gill has made a motion to approve the library board appointments. Council or not, we're not going to second that motion, any debate, discussion, concerns. All right, do you know if they were saying aye aye, opposed? Or opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda. Convention and tourism committee. So, we're going to look at that. And it looks like we've got, um. Does it coast?
No, the only new ones I have is Jessica Fotes is who I am tracking.
Colby.
And Colby, but I already published this when it was.
So, we're going to look at the point, um, Jessica Coats. Colby Richardson. Anything, just can you be reappointed?
No, no, this time, okay.
There'll be Jessica Coats and Colby Richardson.
And Colby did ask about conflict of interest and I told him I don't think there is any Melissa. The only conflict of interest was if he was a direct beneficiary of, of the vote of funds, but I don't matter about that. There's a conflict of interest just because as a city employee, am I on the right track with that? Melissa.
The number one thing is the winner.
Yes.
With the, we approved the reappointment of Jessica Coats and the addition, but before we return to the tourism committee.
I'll second that.
Now, so Chris Gill has made a motion to reappoint Jessica and to appoint Colby to the convention of tourism committee, any other questions today? All right, do you know if they say aye aye, opposed, or motion carries? All right, on the three, the one I watched, Dustin, Dustin, do you want to give us an update?
Um, the update's pretty much what I specified here and in the emails I've been sending, I checked it on Saturday and, um. The, or the twenty first, and as of the twenty first, we're at thirty five point four, which for May's minimum, Kansas minimum is, uh. Right where it should be, but then it jumps up to forty five in June. And, uh, I do know there's rain in the forecast, but, uh. I, I have trust issues with that right now, especially with the winter numbers, the way it's been, there's still a lot of farmers and life is my understanding, Joker, I may have been wrong in any of this. But, uh, it is my, I still think that we, that they're voluntary, we're not requiring anything of anybody. Um, it's just to, it's just to keep the public aware. Um, that we are not out of the woodshields. Based on what we're seeing. But I am keeping an eye on it and monitoring the, the level of river levels, and I'll continue to keep counsel for it.
So, when could we open the splash pad? That's. I mean, I think we ought to, too, that's. Give the kids something to do, you know? Yeah.
Joe, if you can help.
Like, I thought the same thing, like recycle them or something. I don't know what it takes, I didn't get, well, unless we're told we can't, uh.
I think what the top of the, every word, every letter there is. So, that's still.
Couldn't we do with the time, like, have it open? And stick, or is it open all, I mean, how is it?
I just started really getting dry, you know, looking.
But I mean, the state hasn't made a shift, you know, also. Oh, they won't, you know. Yeah.
That's a board decision or the mayor's decision.
And I think it goes despite the appointments, I think the mayor makes the decision, the mayor proves it, so they don't like it, they just say, no, I didn't, I think. If you go into work with that, it's very careful. You haven't been that little way for the weekend, for sure. Um, even if people, they have to be honest, you open up. You know, we have the vacation Bible school or whatever, maybe we look at more, but at least we can start with that.
Yeah, tell us what you want to do, let's try to come here, or what do you want?
I don't want to do week days, too, I mean, I want it open. Something, I'll do something.
We're going to open again Monday, Wednesday, Friday, regular hours. And do you want to get a quote, quote on that then?
Yeah, I, you're weak, very. Yeah.
Okay, that, what was it, right? Okay, sure, all right. Would you call it on the? Yep. It's more. Yeah, definitely. If people will do work, too. Maybe probably with Monday for sure, we can. Yeah, I think that's cool. Yep, Sunday, Friday, for Monday, we should do it. Yeah. Yeah. Why? Yeah, try that, you know, try. Leave yourself an hour in case something happens. Right. It's true, you know, it's a cannon pop, people are going to be just going to stop. If you have to be careful, man. But two minutes just to open this soon as possible. Yeah, as soon as possible, Alan, you have that? They don't, don't mess that up, will you? All right, okay, so here we go, we're moving on, water wash, this guy, new business. We're hopefully selecting the council president for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four year. And there'll be a lot more, it's going to be anyway, yeah.
I'm literally, I'm wondering if I want to add on this. Is, I think that you look at the change, you know, if it's a new resolution or ordinance, we do it this month. It was this month because we did a license in April previously. Now we do a license in November, and we're pointing to January, so it'll make more sense, going forward, if we're going to do it in January.
It would be an ordinance.
It would be an ordinance. I don't need to look at that. I mean.
Yeah, that's the factor you got to consider, so. We probably need to do this now, and then before January, try to make a note, like, hey, do we want to? I want to do it in January, I think that is a good idea. Yeah. In motion?
Well, that's, well, the way, I, I, I outlined a procedure that I stole from somebody else, but it's a generous, uh, each.
Yeah, they nominate, okay, so, following our second, another council. Councilors may express their reasons for nominating to take the plan eight, council managers, if you believe the vote, we conduct. Council receives majority votes, you like this, but in council. So, doesn't talk about, like, you vote yourself a soundpoint.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor nominated Wayne in presence, the council.
Simon has nominated Wayne Crystal as president of the council. And the council mayor, Jonathan, has seconded that motion, any discussion, debate, concerns? Do you want to, if they say aye aye, opposed, our motion carries, we will serve as the council president until an ordinance change in January.
Well, we'd want to do it in Arizona. I would do it before that.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, moving on to, um, that's the council town days, so I can kind of, if you come up and kind of. It's, it's. You know, so, you know, council has been a challenge for three or four years. And there are a lot of reasons behind it, and I think this year, uh, we were able to have it last year, which was really exciting. But there was definitely no, um, guarantee that we could, we could do it again, you know, so. We got to the point of organizing this year, and we just don't have the volunteers, so I think that. You know, the one thing left to know, there's some personal tragedies in there, some different reasons, so. We decided to get it last week, I think, maybe eighteenth, and luckily we have a few people back, but not enough to pull off an event, nowhere near. Uh, nowhere near to pull off a good event, um, so the last year was kind of a. Well, let's just get something out there, and then you're hoping to build on it, have a good event this year, clearly, we've been in worse state this year than we were last year, so. The decision, well, I say, let's not do it on this, let's really refocus, let's get some officers in place. We've got issues with, there's, uh. Proven materials in multiple locations, let's get those things in storage, uh. Uh, units somewhere, let's, let's get insurance, we've got to deal with the insurance, so there's just a lot of things that. Having a year off with a lot of the commission, to kind of put a nice foundation under it. You know, I, I think it's kind of very relying on a few people, I think it's just time for new people. Um. Volunteers in the town everywhere, of course, the American Legion's struggling, I think Kiwanis is struggling to find people, I mean, the list is. Every organization's struggling, so we need new people, so our first meeting, uh, will be July eighteenth at six o'clock at the federal office. I think it'll be the first meeting, it's gonna be, hey, can we do something in twenty twenty four? Or is this possibly the end? We don't get people who show up. Um, they're not committed, they don't, uh. You know, they don't seem like it's something they want to do for a couple of years, then, doesn't necessarily mean that's the end, but that is probably the beginning of the end. Or is that the beginning of the beginning? Do we get ten or fifteen people, people want to become officers, they're committed? Then that's the beginning of the beginning, so really, we're going to lay it out there to the town, and, uh, there are a ton of ideas. Uh. You know, we could do it for two years, we could shoot Sheriff Whitney every five years, if people don't like that, they can wait. There are a lot of different things we could do, but I think July eighteenth and fifteenth is kind of the beginning of that discussion. I feel a sense of relief, uh, there, I've spent a lot of time at that safety. And it's just time to rebuild that, you know, if we wanted to the town. Now, we got to put the effort into it, it requires a lot of manpower. Um. You know, I think there's future for it. But not necessarily, but we got, we can test, if you went there. That is a great success, uh, fall set that big is a new for a couple of years, is growing, it's a success, so. Wonderful, go on, and we just can't get the interest in downtown, um, so I, I think really it comes down to meeting, and getting some new folks in there. And, um, and really, that's it, and say, can you anything to her?
Just order station. So that there is no confusion. It is not, and has not been a launch for the city. Nor was it, or not a function of the chamber of promise. So, it's all an independent move of volunteers, putting it at their time, others make town. It has, it has, by the law, see, for you, it's a failure, having a city of the chamber, it's just a round ball. I don't like this nation.
But this is what I said, they can call me seven eight five through seven six, seven one five five, if you need more information, I know a lot of people are on Facebook and. You know, um. But they weren't calling, they weren't trying to get more information, so that's my challenge to them. And then, I will definitely, you know, if the committee wants to, we'll, we'll call the ones who shows up on the eighteenth, so we need people to show up and. And participate, and, uh, you know, so I think that, you know, it's kind of up in the air, so, um. I, I hope for it, I think that it could be a great event for the city, and it really affects the citizens, it requires. I'm not throwing another twenty people, twenty, you know, five to seven officers, and you gotta have at least ten to thirteen. Some of our volunteers just pull it off, and you got a parade, you got the concert, you got to pick up trash, you got, it goes, it goes into, and we're not going to near that now. Anyway, that's the essential for downtown, does anybody have any questions? Here. Can you give us the date and place? Uh, July eighteen, sixteen, what if, basically? Yeah. And, yeah, okay. All right, moving along here, so. We talked a lot about opportunity, and opportunity comes in different ways, so. You know, the pizza hut sign was running for a long time, right, if the windstorm came along, it's knocking out, it was just, there were some. Bulbs getting in for months and months and months, so rather than, you know, just going to conclusions and all that, I mean, Dustin, I just started just talking and. You know, before we talked to them, we, we kind of felt like that was more complicated than you thought, because you had to go order a. A company right at the plastic sign and all that, so we, we never called the owner. My, in the process, we just started talking about that property next to the cemetery, it's, it's the carter, it's, it's to use for. Parts and recreation, um, we thought, you know what, for at least the kind of thing, let's, let's create a little dog park there to do it very expensively. Um, so we started engaging the owner of Pizza Hut and the manager of Pizza Hut. They're tentatively not going to allow us to park their Pizza Hut, maybe walk across. Um, you know, to the city property from the parking lot, to integrate them a park of some sort there, Kirk and Michael has already done a drawing of it. I think we're at the stage now, that we want to get a quote for fencing material and kind of engage the community in that discussion. One of the reasons we brought it up now was because we really needed to, give it a, give it a hand grab from this part, we didn't need to. Bring this up, have that advisory committee, committee, which might be one of the dog park there, so it was important that they have a first meeting. That's the direction, and, and they're not heading in that direction, so now was the time to, um, kind of talk about this. I like it because the people are using the. In front of cases, they're in front of hotels, they're, they're walking their dogs all over the place, um. You know, it, it gives the city residents a place where we want some happy second, a lot of long runs for our dogs, they're. You know, they're, everybody's in the basement back there, but nothing for a large dog, so we provide our residents. Um, you know, something along those lines, and also is a reason for people to stop along the highway. With the little state rochers there, we could, you know, have gratitude, the hat goes there, talk about Albert, but. There's something that we could start off super cheap, super easy, see how it goes, and we can build in there, we don't need a light right now. We don't need radio, TV right now, we don't need a GZBO right now, but if it starts to take off, we can start entertaining. And I think Pizza Hut, once it's kind of in your background, you know, here in California, there's more of a restaurant, because apparently during the pandemic. Nobody eats the buffet, they close the buffet, you literally cannot go in the Pizza Hut, you don't think anybody sits in there anymore. So, they could have put some outside seating, you could go to Pizza Hut, grab a little personal fan pizza, just watch your dog run around. So, it's going to be a win-win for us and for them, and then, so we had Kirk and Michael do a drawing. And then, this could be your identity here, and that, that's really, everybody now, if you're looking, tries to prevent. You know, like it in two years, it's super easy to pick a fence up, if you want any bubble pills out of the way, dog park, you got to meet. They get the fence, you know, help food, just go in for the ground, it's not a big deal, and we could, we could do it every month with the property, so that's the thought there, I guess.
Got a four, five? Two?
Not necessarily, no, it was just night.
Yeah. I mean, you're crazy. Chain link fence ain't cheap, I know that, that's, yeah, it comes up again, the time.
You have daycare, you have interest center, a lot of things, but I think, you know, we're going to get started somewhere, too. Yeah, I don't think the, is the kind of thing that, uh, childcare does, you know, so, you know. Yeah, this line ability, like, in terms of all this, but I think other towns do it, and, um. I will tell you, I said, I mean, I've got every dog park memorized from Denver to Southern Illinois. You got, like, the Ozarks has a crack, excuse my language, a cracky little piece of after turf there. And none of the ministries have a place to let your dog out and really run, um, there is a place, I think the Los Grados Plaza has places, there's a place in Colby at the Oasis. There's just nothing out there, if you're traveling, your dog will really get out and run, so it's possible down the road that we could drag the people. Not drive, but, uh, track them up, interstate, um, so, you know, down the road, something's just a good, good, you know, there's a lot of money in dogs. It's just, it's stopping what people do for their dog. It's, it's, it's only growing, so, but it's demographics that, uh. There's a lot of money in it, uh, that's the idea.
Questions? Uh, I guess. Get a bunch of fence going to be, because I'm not really digging it, but let's see what we got.
Yeah, it's small, super small. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the two and four thousand, yeah, they love that stuff.
Yeah, they love it.
Yes.
We've been eight million times. We've been a great man. We've been to a wide, you know, coins and have a little one. You know, they they would have come here. There's just a lot of, you know, cross colonization going on there. So I think it's a great idea, but.
Absolutely. Yeah, verbally I've talked to. Yeah, you know, but I uh. I didn't make, oh, of course, I just didn't want to pursue it any further till you told me right how you wanted to go.
Yeah, go from there. All right, um, any questions about it? Okay, so moving on to Parkland Recreation. Uh, of course, trees. I'm here, water steward. Okay. All right, um.
We discussed internally specifically that would be awesome to set us up there. And um. First thing he follows. I hear a lot about the safety aspect of leaders. So we we can be a bit available and. It's a major concern and not any. So I was just talking about it a couple of days before it was just. It can be more of a pop. Each door, your crew shoulder. Right, so. And the sculpture is here that interrupts uh. Or this, so we found the set and that was it. One of the places will probably be set and be up by the side street of the past. So you're running the car around and we make it and stuff like that. Um. And then there's a couple of places where you can get it off the improved shoulder. And then what they should be talking about is like, hey, you know, these beings, somebody just has a little bit more reflective lighting. Stickers, there's the groups. Yeah, that complex. And maybe look at that, okay, those are the rear bottom of the car, the rear of the car, I said. That's a great idea. Let me start kind of explore that. So we started to get some of the projects, we got wrapped up. We had a gray sticker, little newer stickers and. Again, we're splitting instead of, as we get into this project, wrap it up and reach out for our up there and see if we come up some sort of design, something. It's even easier to still look up our cars. So this is, they're like, they really pop from the rear. So those are a couple of things I'm talking about. And it's also many games. Those are often. But some of those things that we find acceptable that we are president and. We appreciate that there was a thought of public safety aspect and not just. Anything else, so. That's what we were.
You ready? The vote, what's the plan? The plan, the election. Start the election on its first. He will be. Where where are they going to vote?
They're going to vote the and anywhere they come to U S D one hospital district, not ours.
Okay. Then well, it's the county here. Could people collect here afterwards? Are they discussing that or not? Not yet. I mean, just keep us a little bit. We need to do something. Right.
All the voting places are within one class. School district, not three.
And if you need something for a lot, keep it for a little bit.
Sort of between now and then, sure, across my house, just sit down. This is obviously their responsibility case. Sure. I don't see the whole interpretation, but they're really, but uh. Such a between now and then. He sat down and was telling you what he heard the second.
Yeah.
What are your thoughts, Bones? Because we, uh, in the past elections, it's fair, the general election, we've had conversations about things and. That's why they're um, they're lost setting up somewhere. It is the one that they're all set up on is because we have a camera. Department and casting out of the camera. So that's why they chose there is. You know, that was a reasonable question for the department. They ever covered the law.
Right, so if if it's like the last election, I mean, Kelly will come out and still like update a whiteboard. So we could see banners.
Absolutely.
As it is older, you know, you don't, you just don't know. Someone says something to somebody and all of a sudden, here we go. Not being, you know, to see Dustin and Luke myself, um. You know, if the government buying, then somebody would have to do it. Uh. Want to be honest though. Yeah, okay, you stop, let us know when you're gonna supervise. Okay. Thank you, appreciate it. And look, I'm here building the second, not here, city attorney, any comments?
Get a good conversation, nail it down, hit set of the process and also you guys can see if you can come across here and then there already be. Okay, this is known for a while.
I have included everything in my memorandum of the council. Okay, if you have any questions, I'll be sure.
I'm trying to be everything.
No.
Wait. Eric. All right, rather than that, Mayor sounds, we're talking a lot about um. Cal Town, talk about reelection. Um, I specifically hadn't asked anybody what they're going to do uh for a lot of reasons, I think, I don't want. You know, I I really have a lot of respect for people who run for office, but I think even more respect for people who run for reelection because. It's a referendum on how we. It's sort of how we perform. I think it's a lot of it here, probably how many friends you have and all that kind of stuff, but. But either way. You know, the decision you made, like, that's our thing. We certainly appreciate what you've done. And um. Our hands are off, you know, on you or off to you if you decide one one for reelection, which is the best. And that said, we're going to need a motion to go into executive session. Uh, return your mind. Yeah. That's a real problem. Forty-five minutes.
Mr. Mayor, we're going to executive session, this acquisition of um. Real property. Not only the council, administrator.
I'm interested in the motion to go into executive session for the acquisition of real property. The little six thirty to move the city attorney. Um, Green Los Angeles County, Spaceman, we got the city clerk, city administrator, city council and mayor. Six thirty, Johnson, that center that motion. Our most characters go to executive session. Thank you.
Thank you.